Welcome to North Reading, running Board of Appeals Public Hearing for this evening, and I would just ask for audio quality if you are not speaking. Just put yourself on mute. Mute and then when your matter is up, we will ask for input and participation and then you can identify yourself to the board and go from there. So, all right, you know, let's see if we can crank through everything this evening. I'd like to start with, we had a couple of continuations. Do we have the folks for 142 Main here?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we're here.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm just gonna read the public hearing notice. Continued virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, July 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM on petition of 142 Main Street Realty LLC care of law offices of Richard G. Duralmo for a special permit to run four landscaping businesses at 142 Main Street, North Reading, MA, map 25 parcel three with an ancillary use of storage of motor vehicles and equipment. This is a continuation and going as a starting point, note that member Green has a conflict on this one and will not be voting. This has been on and off in front of this board for over a year. It looks like going back from the files. And it was in front of our board a number of years ago for, for a couple of things. Originally for a site plan with CPC in connection with bringing in a business trailer and the used car dealership that was there back in 2015, 16 era. And then subsequently in front of our board, 2018 requesting a special permit for parking of of vehicles and materials of trucks and materials which was denied. There's a lot in this file which we've had the opportunity to go through. And before we sort of close and go on to discussions, want to avail it to the board for any questions they may have of the applicant. Maria or Brendan? And Kathy, can you share the, the site plan for this, which is?
Yep.
Some page, something of our 114 pages.
Do you want the last one received or the one previously?
The whatever most recently from the applicant, which shows they plan with four potential lease areas. Kathy, can you blow that up, please? So this is.
Bigger or you like, is that good?
That's one more, one more notch, please, if you would. Thank you. So we have property on Main Street.
I'm not thinking this is the right one. This doesn't show the two other, the four businesses.
No, that's the, that's, well, leave that for a moment because we can chat about that while we have it here. Because there was, and I just want clarification for on some comments we had from the applicant counsel last meeting about having approval for outdoor storage from the CPC before, and this was, this one was around, around 2018. And having CPC provided us with a copy of that approval, that of their site plan review. And the outdoor storage they were approving was for the specific use and they've sent a memo to the file, which we, it's in the file, we can read it. But clarifying that when there was a used auto dealership on the property, there was certain outdoor storage permitted in conjunction with that use. But there was, and there was some required landscaping. You can see it right at the, at the bottom of the plan along Main Street, the gray area with little stars that represents trees, some required landscaping as part of that site plan review coming out of CPC. But they have sent a memo to our department saying that was the outdoor storage was solely in connection with the proposed use at that time, the used auto dealer, which is no longer there and that the landscaping was required, site plan landscaping and not approval of a landscaping use. So I just wanted to have that clarification for the record. All right, if there, unless there's any other questions about this old plan, we can swap that out for the applicant's current proposal.
Okay, here it is. So I'm a little bit smaller.
All right, so it looks like there are four areas in hash marks, area A, B in front by Main Street and then C and D in the back. The residential trailer homes are in the middle of the property. And then that right hand square up front is a gas station and that's now under separate ownership. Just by means of or by way of recap, we had the police chief in last hearing to talk about access for, I'm sorry, not police, fire, fire chief in last time to talk about access for fire trucks, which is being done, which proposed via a gate through the adjoining gas station through a fence on their property. So it will allow a, a full U transit by the fire and safety vehicles. So that was, that was, I know it was something that was on our list to get confirmation that was done. And at our last hearing, since we had a lot of materials presented to us right on the, on the eve or day of hearing, we extended, so we had, you know, opportunity to read through these in full. So thank you for your patience there. And I'm gonna go to Maria. I know you had wanted some, you had requested an extension and I just wanted to sort of open it up to you as a starting point on if you had any additional questions for the applicant or their counsel while they're here.
I think you muted, Marie. Or your volume isn't working?
I think you may be. Can you hear me now? Is it any better?
That's great. Thank you, Maria.
Sure. Um, my question is sort of what the status is with, with the easement and also the distance between the businesses and the mobile homes and how many employees at each business and where they will be parking their vehicles?
Okay, so let's go through those one at a time. Marie, if you want to recap, first question was
the status of the easement agreement with the other, the, the new owner of where the gas station is. You know, if they are in agreement to do an easement and if that is going to be something that this applicant is agreeing to.
We, we, as we indicated last time, Madam Chair, for the record, Richard D. Duralmo on behalf of the applicant. As we indicated on the previous, uh, previous appearances before your board, the the gas station is willing to give an easement. They're willing to, to grant an easement for consideration. They're not willing to give an easement. So we are able to get an easement, but it's, it's, it's not something that's inexpensive. And I think part of the evidence that we presented at the previous meeting was that these units are income restricted and they do not generate very much income at all. The average trailer there pays $360 a month. So, you know, it, from a, from an economic standpoint, it's somewhat cost prohibitive to be able to grant, to be able to enter into an easement with the current owners of the, of the gas station unless there was also an ability to generate some additional revenue from the landscaping businesses who obviously are able to pay higher rent than the trailers. So I think we presented that last time, but to answer strictly your question is they are willing to give an easement, but it's not something that they're willing to do gratis. They're looking for, you know, until this is considerable expense involved in doing that easement, which the applicant is prepared to do, but it, it, it honestly doesn't work economically unless they're able to keep the business revenue that's currently in place for which they are seeking the special permit.
So the easement is contingent upon approval of the four landscaping companies? Is that sort of what you just?
Well, I, I, I think what we're saying is that, you know, I know the applicant on the previous, the previous meeting indicated that that the vast majority of the income in this place is generated by the businesses, not by the trailers. So I, I think what he, what he presented at the previous meeting was that and nodded so many words because he's not present this evening. He's actually on his way to this. We, we, we thought we were a little later on in the agenda, but I think what he presented was that it probably doesn't work to it could, from a consideration standpoint, probably doesn't work to keep the trailer park open. Which necessitates an easement from the gas station unless he's able to maintain the businesses there.
But there's a, isn't there an obligation to maintain the trailer park for some number of years? You know, maybe coming up on the end of it. Remind me what the, the term of that is?
No, I think the, I think the obligation was for, I don't know, it's for another, I believe it's another year, but yes, it's the end of 24, so. And I don't think that's, I don't think it's an obligation. I think what it is, is there was a deed restriction that says that they're not going to serve a notice of discontinuance prior to that, the expiration at that time. So, you know, but it's a fairly short period of time. So, I mean, he would like, he would like to, I think he presented on, on the previous occasion that he would like to maintain this trailer park and he'd like to be able to, you know, I mean, the, the, the trailers, quite frankly, don't even generate enough income to pay the real estate taxes on this site, let alone other expenses. So I think what he presented at the previous meeting was that if the board were willing to work with him and grant the special permits, then he would obviously keep the trailer park open and look for a solution, a long-term solution to the entire, you know, I don't know if at some point this becomes a development site or what have you, but short term, you know, for the number of trailers that are there generating $360 a month, this just doesn't work economically, particularly given the consideration that's being set up at the gas station to in exchange for, for an access easement.
The end. Okay, so that was easement.
Right. What I, when the, when the fire chief was speaking, I was just, I, I was under the impression this is the only way that he suggested it would be sort of, you know, an option or a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, clearly, if they're able to keep the businesses there, then he would obviously maintain, he would obviously go forward and and, 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 you know, with the, with the easement, you know, but that, like I said, that the revenue here that's generated from these businesses is what really pays the bills in this place. It's not the income restricted trailers.
But to Maria's point and so, so no, if, if, if I could, I think, and actually I'm, I'm, I was jumping in for Maria, so I'll let, I think you know, we're I'll let you go there. Me?
Obviously.
I think it was, it was a requirement of the fire chief that you have it. It's not conditional or related to these additional landscaping uses you want. It's because you sold off the fire, I mean, sold off the gas station and have to have a second means of egress for residential development. This was what I was getting at. Maybe I misconstrued.
Obviously, if, if, if the board saw, saw fit, you know, the applicant would be okay with a condition within the permit that the special permits are conditioned upon his granting in easement or his purchasing an easement that would enable the residents of the trailer park to, you know, have a secondary means. The issue could be, has a fairly short term obligation under the terms of the deed restriction.
So you could perhaps negotiate a shorter license period, but my understanding is that this is not related to the landscaping use. This is solely to do with staying residential use. You need it whether or not you get a permit from us.
Correct.
That's a fire safety issue.
Correct.
All right, so we get that these landscaping businesses are there, have the potential to generate money. Gotcha.
So I guess moving on to my next question was, how close are the landscaping businesses in proximity to the trailers and how many employees and where they will be parking?
The landscaping business, you're not I think they're, they're, they employ, well, let me address the number of employees first. So they're approximately, they each have, two of the businesses have three to four employees. And one of the businesses, and I don't know, was there a, I believe we have a plant designated area A, area B, and area C. The business that's located in area A, which is kind of directly behind to the left rear of the gas station, employs seven to nine employees. The, the business that employs, that, that occupies B, Eduardo's Landscaping, and the first one was Elite, Elite Services. That's, that's the one that's the larger number of employees, seven to nine. Area B is three to four employees. That's Eduardo's Landscaping. And area C, which is Greenman Landscaping Irrigation, employs three employees. They also do some snow plowing. I don't think that there's a parking issue here at all with their employees. I don't believe that there's a parking issue, although I can't say that I know where they park, but I don't think there's, given the size of the area here, I don't think there's any issue with parking, you know? I don't even know that there are that, I think most of the people are North Red, I was told that most of the residents are North Reading residents will live in close proximity. So I don't think there's really a much of a parking issue with the employees of these three businesses.
And you had mentioned snow plows. Will there be snow plows parked here as well?
No, I think they just, I, no, there will not be snow plows there. They merely, I think the, the help gathers there and then they're sent out, but there's no snow plowing equipment on site.
And the residential?
The only plow that they keep there is for the, they actually do the snow plowing for the residential. They gratuitously do the snow plowing for the residential trailers. So I think they on season keep one snow plow there merely to perform that function. But other than that, I don't think there's any issue of storage of equipment, snow plow equipment.
And the hours of operation?
I, I don't think they are, I, I honestly don't know. I think, do we know that question, Rhonda?
I don't believe that was covered.
Yeah, I don't think we know the answer to that. I believe that you know, pretty much daytime uses, I don't think there's anybody there after 6:00, 5:00 or 6:00 PM at night. And I think they're probably fairly early in the morning, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock, but that's what I recall. I don't know for sure the answer to that. And my client is in room, if you'd like me to, you know, certainly when he gets here, I'm happy to present that question to him. But I, I don't think it's a I don't think it's certainly extraordinary hours, you know?
And only the one company with the, you said the snow plowing would be sort of like a year round thing? The rest of them would only be seasonal?
Yes, it's a seasonal operation, yeah. The only one that does, yeah. And, and his, and his primary business, even the one, even the green irrigation and landscaping is primarily a landscaping operation. I'm told that he does minimal snow plowing, including the trailer park, but I don't think, yeah, it's mo- mostly a mostly a seasonal type business for all three of them.
All right, Brendan.
Yes, I noticed on the old, I think it was a 2015, maybe LJR Engineering plot plan we had up earlier. It showed like a a septic or a waste storage area for the trailer park down in front by the landscaping area. I did not see that on the new proposed plan.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that that was taken into consideration and there's no issues with, you know, placement of that.
Let me look at that on plan. Your question is whether that, I'm sorry, what you, you're, I misunderstood the question. Your question is whether or not that is, that is interfering with anything?
Whether it's going to interfere with anything, such as, you know, storage of materials, placement of.
No, doesn't interfere at all. That's a, that's a, no, that's, doesn't interfere whatsoever. No issue. That's been there for, you know, quite some time.
Okay.
These are, these are very low impact type uses. It's not, you know, they're not, they're not real busy type operations. They're, they're, for the most part, you know, sole proprietors. In some cases, North Reading residents who own their own businesses, but these are not major operations by any means. They're, they're fairly small businesses in all, in all cases.
Yeah, no, I under, I understand that. I was just more concerned with, you know, you're basically taking area B and potentially plopping it on top of a a waste or septic, a septic area, if that has any implications or if that's even you know, feasible for the Board of, Board of Health or if there's any constructibility issues with that.
Where, I'm sorry, where are you seeing that the?
That's on the old, the old original plan that we pulled up earlier from.
I understand. Yes, I understand. I have, I have no information that leads me to conclude there was any interference at all with that. I think, you know, obviously they, they're really using a portion of that lot designated as area B. So certainly there's, I think, ample room for whatever waste for whatever, you know, for whatever waste situation, you know, whatever wa- waste improvements they have there. I, I'm not familiar where it is on the site. But I, I, I understand what you're saying. It was previously appeared on a, it appeared on a previous plan.
Appeared on a previous plan and then, you know, obviously if these businesses, if they require any type of no, no rest, restrooms for employees or anything like that, if that current.
Yeah, again, we would be certainly amenable to any kind of a condition that makes it, you know, the, such that area B could not be occupied by a business that interferes in any way with, you know, that's impactful in any way to that storage area. So, you know, if, if the board felt necessary. I mean, our, our client will agree to any reasonable set of conditions that your board feels maybe appropriate here such that the businesses and the residents can, you know, coexist on the site amicably, which they do now. There's no, you know, there's no interference at all right now with any of the businesses. The businesses enjoy a good relationship with the trailer residents. So I don't think there's any, any reasonable set of conditions would be amenable. While I was talking to you, I did have a notation and I was fairly close. The hours of operation for these businesses on Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then on Saturday from eight to three. Those are the hours of operation to answer the previous question.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And do we know, Jennifer, maybe even Jerry, if there's a a limit or a certain requirement per business for a number of parking spaces that they do need?
We, we can certainly limit. We don't have to provide them with any parking whatsoever. So if your board felt that that was a sticking point, we certainly could limit, you know, or curtail parking on site if you felt that that was going to somehow be a hindrance to the trailer trailers, you know, in, in close proximity. So it's not an issue. I don't think there's any obligation to provide parking or if there is, it's a very minimal one.
Brendan, that would be if, if the use is granted, then that would go to the zoning board of appeals. I'm sorry, it would go to, it would then go to CPC.
CPC.
CPC. Um CPC would then would then have to also grant them. Uh, the. New opening in which they created till to the left side of of area B. As they never had the approval. For that. Area in the fencing wheel.
Gotcha.
They would also have to get approval for from CPC. For any outdoor storage of materials. Um, because we can't. Those are. Explicitly prohibited by the bylaws. Um, unless approved by CPC. Um. So it's a it's a um. The the split between review responsibilities between zoning and CPC is interesting here in that. We get to opine on the on whether or not. Uh, a landscaping use is allowed by if we want to grant a special permit for it. And then they would need to take the plans over to CPC for. Um. All layout and outdoor storage approval.
Uh, we're certainly willing to go before, you know, whatever whatever the path is, Madam Chair, we're certainly willing to comply if your board. Uh directs us to. We did present, as you know, part of our evidence consisted of um. And presented a previous meeting suggested that under the. North American nineteen ninety seven. Classification system, it would seem that. Storage is in fact included within the definition, but certainly if your board feels. It appropriate for us to go before the CPC or. Any other board requesting that additional. But we believe to be in uh. An included. You know, in included within the use table, but we we're happy. We're happy to do that.
I think I think you do have to go to them for site plan.
Yeah, that's fine. We would have no issue with.
Um, do we have? Kathy, is there any and with any abutters or anyone else from the community here that has? Questions around this particular hearing? Um. If you do, you can. Literally raise your hand or send a. Click the icon. That's like a hand raise or send a message to Kathy that you'd like to speak. These may all be for other hearings. Hearing none. Um, and I think we. I think I have enough. Information to just for us to discuss. Um, but before I close the public hearing, is there anything else? Um. The board would like to ask, well, we have the applicant or well, we have the applicants council here. And being said, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for deliberation. May I have a second on that? Um, Maria.
Yes, I'm Maria Lockhart. Second that motion.
Thank you. Um. Right, so. Board. When I know this is.
Do a roll call.
On on seconding the motion. Or on the we I I think we. We need to on what Kathy?
On the motion altogether? No.
Sure. Um, here are the motion to close the public hearing for deliberation. Maria Lockhart.
Maria Lockhart.
Right. Oh, say yes or no. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Brendan.
I Brendan Riley. Yes.
All right, and myself, Jennifer, but I. Okay, so board. Um. It's it. Interesting situation. I totally understand that we've got. A an owner here who wants to. Get some more value out of uh out of a property and totally support. Local businesses. I that's um. Question for us is whether this is an appropriate. Business to have on this site. And and if it is to kind of what extent. Uh, we have already for this property. Denied a request for outdoor storage of trucks. And this is a request for outdoor storage of trucks and materials to support landscaping business. Um. And compared to some of the other uh landscaping businesses that we have granted. For example, um, the one by Boston Flower Market. There is a the retail store over the. Majority of the site and then some um. Landscaping equipment, which we permitted to be parked at the the back of the site out of. Of view from the street. Uh, the other example or one of the other examples the applicant brought up was a Viking tree out on Concord. Street, uh, which is just that's their retail and well, their office building. They had and their vehicles are again parked behind. Um, so I have, I I definitely have some concerns with and I've and I've been on this site. Uh, multiple times, just kind of open outdoor storage of. Trucks and landscaping materials. Um, that being said, if there's a way to help. You know, have some use on here, maybe maybe it's not all of them, but some of it. Uh, so. There was some. Income potential. And again, we have to make sure that it's not having a negative impact on residents and community. Whether that's the folks living right there, the abutters. All that. Right, that's some initial thoughts. Maria, what you what are you thinking?
Um, I was thinking if there was a designated area. You know, perhaps in a limited number of trucks or something.
Mm hmm.
Also, I'm concerned about the impact of what keeps coming up in these meetings where. They're saying that they're not going to be able to keep it for the people that live in the trailer parks. So it's kind of like a catch twenty two, because while they might have these businesses around them and it gives them less space, they might not be living there in a couple of years if these businesses aren't there because. The owner can't really afford to keep that space. So. I think it kind of goes both ways. So it's um, it's a tough one. This is a tough one. It's gonna it's it's complicated.
Jennifer, I'm hung up on one uh issue that was brought up earlier. I understand you correctly, in a little over a year's time, they don't necessarily need to keep. The trailer park there. Is that correct? There's no obligation to.
The under the the deed. Um, for the property says that the. The owner agrees not to serve any two year notice of change of use or discontinuation to the manufactured housing community tenants. Per N G L chapter one forty, section thirty two L. Paragraph eight, or take any other actions for the purposes for the purpose of discontinuing use. Of the manufactured housing community now in existence on this land until on or after January one twenty five. So it's under mass statute where you have a a trailer. Residential trailer community. Uh, there's a protection built in because, you know, these are often some of our um. Disadvantaged.
Yeah.
Residents. And you can't simply close down a a residential trailer facility.
Yeah.
Um, you have to give two years notice under by statute. And the deed says they can't give that two years notice until January one twenty five. So I think we we've got residents there for. You know, another.
Probably a year and a year and a half or a little more.
Well, January two thousand twenty seven would be when they could actually kick them out based on the notice. So. Yeah.
So I think that that protects them. But again, I mean, this is a a. Oh. Property right on Main Street. It has a. And the owners would have the rights to develop it after that. Just change the development after that time period. And so I think this is sort of a. You know, bit of a gap measure to try to get. Revenue for the property. While they still have the trailer home. But we're not, we're not hearing any promises that it's going to be there long term and and, you know, honest. Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's.
Did they say how many trucks were going to be parked there? I don't remember that from the last hearing.
No, uh, well, I don't. Um, let's see, so through my notes here. That is something that you, um, I mean, for any other. Business that we have granted a special permit, that's something that we've put into a in conditions of how many. We thought were appropriate on site. Um, again, I mean, we're it's landscaping. We know this is the this is the prime time of year for it. Um.
And do we know specifically what kind of material and how much space it would take up? Because that's kind of. The crux of all of it, really, the storage.
Uh, things I saw were things that have been on site are mulch, sand, gravel, that sort of thing. Let's see, Mr. Sonata has two vehicles. With two to six employees. Where we have Eduardo's construction and paving. I'm not thrilled about paving. Um, and Greenman irrigation. And I I feel like they're trying to cram a lot in here. And it's kind of like it literally it's in all four corners of the of the property with the residents in the middle. And. If I were living in the middle, I really wouldn't be thrilled with this. All the landscaping trucks coming in and out every morning and evening around me. That's. Um. If it were a way to do. Um. I think we, I mean, they'll have to just make the areas in the back, I think, were were. Sighted, so they have. Have to be set back from rapier brook. There's a creek that runs along the back edge of the property. So anything has to be outside of the one hundred foot setback. That's conservation. Um. There was a. It's noted a D E P restoration area in the back of the property.
Um, Rihanna is got her hand up.
I'm sorry, who does?
Rihanna, uh, attorney Roman.
Uh, yes.
Madam Chair, point of clarification, I do realize the record's closed. Point of clarification is that business, that's the name of that business, but I am told they do not do paving any longer.
Thank you for that clarification noted. Right, my esteemed colleagues. You say a way forward on this? All right, um, suggestions, I mean it. I would say I personally, um. I would not be inclined to have. Uh, just storage of. Trucks and materials in the front of the property. There's probably some way, given how large the lot is and the setbacks towards the back. To have some in the back of the property. Again, and that would be subject to. CPC approval on. The outdoor storage. Uh, and it's it still has and it's still concerning to me is that. Um. The trucks then have to, they've got to go all the way around the residential units. To come in and go out every morning and evening. So you're, I mean, I know we're in the highway business district. The residential uses, neither of these uses are allowed as of right now, which is kind of interesting quirk. Where does and how can you have the the least impact on the residents? And allow some. Leaf to. The business owner.
I agree with everything you said.
Hey, um. If we were to. Grant something in the here we go, we're looking at the back of the property. So again, another thing we've done, we've required. Is that we can make it a requirement if they can meet it. Then so be it, but. Every other landscaping business that we have given a special permit to in the last. Um. Several years, they have had a. Um, an office on site. It's not pure storage. It's you're running a business. It's like um. Viking tree has. Offices. Um, Boston Flower Market has the. The Garden Center and office space. These are, these are pure storage, so. As I say that, I mean, we we have not allowed that. More. I mean, you can fit it under. Under landscaping, but it's. Just going back to we're highway business district, sometimes just. Go back to our bylaws. The purpose of the highway business district is to provide businesses involved in retailing, services and amusement and recreational activities. Um. Range and intensity from neighborhood services to regional commercial centers. Intended to encourage unique design and site planning solutions for intensive and mixed use and to acquire quality site design which incorporates. Desirable amenities as an integral part. Desirable amenities as an integral part of each development. Which is a little bit of what we've been trying to do with other businesses to make sure that there's some. You know, attractive retail or to make these sites particularly because it is right on Main Street. To make the, the site as accessible to, for the community for retail use. And. Attractive. Which is why we have, to the extent that we have given any permits, special permits for landscaping businesses, any storage of trucks and materials has to be. In the way back. Out of, essentially out of sight. And. So give me some of your thoughts here, I think we can, we can deal with the way back by areas C and D, but we don't have any, um. I guess we could put as a condition, they need to have. And you have an office on site, I know there was an office, one of these is an office trailer, you could have a. Requirement that there's someone available on, on site, I mean, it just. I, I think. Yeah. Brendan, you're up, let's have some thoughts.
Yeah, I, I, I just see a lot of stuff like you had, um, mentioned, just really crammed into. The, the site, and I agree with all of your, um, your talking, your talking points. Especially on the, you know, on the front, along the, uh, the Highway and Business District. Um, I see what we've. Done, or at least trying to do with other areas along the business district and try to, you know, beautify it, um. Make it more attractive, and I don't, I just can't wrap my head around how this is going to be. Attractive. At all, and I keep going back to the, you know, the residents that are there. Just kind of crammed in the middle of all of this, um, piles of mulch, um, gravel, I don't know if there's. Stone or retaining wall materials there, and then for the equipment to load all that up. Um, I see the site just being very, very congested. And there is only that. One means in, you sort of do have to loop all the way. Um, you know, around. So, and if we were to do anything, maybe just. As you suggested, limited to the, to the back areas of, of C and D. With a, you know, with an office or some type of, uh. A, uh, retail area, you know, in the front for those, um. Businesses in the back to utilize maybe.
Think, I'm all for mixed use and I, I just, I, I wish, um. They'd come up with something that was a more attractive plan for this property, it's really, I, I guess like, how can you? Get some. Well. We're, we're not, not looking to build anything here which. Enhances Main Street.
Um, much of area B can be seen, that, that one, that landscaping with all the trees in front of it?
There's a, there's a white fence, white plastic fence that they put up, they were required to put that up. Back from the 2015 and then the trees in front, so it, there is, it is a buffer to the street, but. I, I honestly, I'm, I'm. It's better than what's behind it, it's hiding what's behind it, but it's not, you can't, there's no sidewalk there, you can't walk up and go anywhere, it's not, um, you know, it's, it's, it's. Parking and storage. So. I mean, I, I think it kind of cuts both ways, I know that, you know, the applicant has, has said, and they had, they, they were required to put in that landscaping by the C P C. So it's a good, it's good at hiding what's there, but it's not. Yeah, that's, yeah, leave it at that. I mean, it. It's almost like they should have put the. Put the landscaping around the residents to give them buffer as opposed to. Hiding everybody and the business back from Main Street.
Unless they, that a little smaller, I mean, if they could make area be a little bit smaller and make it much better. Cause I'm not as concerned again about area C and D because they're way in the back. But that, right up there in the front, yeah, um, based on what, um. Is required, um. Just, just a big like storage area, it doesn't seem like that's what the, you know, what was intended, so. At all, so yeah, that's kind of the one, sort of. Yeah, so that, that's kind of the one that sticks out for me, the front one.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, I mean, it's not so much that it seems like they're really. Operating. So much out of the area as they are using it for just storage of their. Materials and. Yeah, and goods and supplies, um. And the landscaper, they're going to go, they're going to come to your. Come to your house, meet you on your property or on your, on your side and walk you through everything. Um, there, there has to be a way to maybe limit the amount of. Space that's. Allotted for, um. For some of these materials.
You may recall, we had a number of hearings with. Reading Hardware. To get all the landscaping trucks that they were, they were subleasing space in the front of their property, right in.
Yeah.
To get those off. Because, again, and, and maybe we're just over, overthinking this, because. You're not.
The ones in the front are much closer to the trailers too, as opposed to the ones in the back that are separated like by this, you know, by that path through. There's just more space back there too.
So if we were to grant a, um. I, I can't, I, I'm still stuck, I can't see how to get over this, just not, just being. Storage of. Of trucks and materials. Which. They had. They were, they had a, gotten, they got approval bef- before to have parking of cars in connection with a used car dealership, again, not a. Glamorous use, but it. You know, it's, it made sense, there was a. Retail's business and then the storage next to it. These are just isolated storage, I'm. Even in the back, and I don't think it's consistent with what we've done. For other properties. Um, and I would like this owner to be able to, to get some. Utilize their property and get some revenue, I know they sold the, the gas station, but, you know, these can be, these are independent properties now, so it needs to stand on its. Own. But. It's just.
So would one of the requirements be that they had to have, uh, an office space in each one?
Let's see, and they are sending us a chat which just disappeared, where'd it go? That, three of the buildings, businesses have, um, the applicant wants you to know that. Uh, they have business offices on site. People would like to have an office if they are allowed to stay. Three of, and the third. Okay. All right, so we could put that as a condition, it sounds like they can meet that, that they have an office on site. Now it's, um, A is, uh, I would. Is that a, um, I'm not inclined to go with a, just, you know, anything that should be some green space, I know the site. Um, from the C P C memo, um, is, doesn't make it screen space requirements. Um, it has some green space in the back by the brook, but. Yeah, they're the. A would be more appropriate for green space for the development, the resi development. And. So if we did A and B. With a condition that has to get C P C approval for outdoor storage of materials and. Of any, uh, yeah, and they're going to want to. Concom's going to want to make sure that there's no issue with. Being close to the brook. Would. And. Okay, um, so I know, again, we had closed. Input, but, um, counsel, can you give me clarification of how many? Of, how many vehicles or trucks would be in those two areas? How many vehicles?
Madam Chair, Peter P and I do see the owner of the property. Um, so approximately in area B. I would say. Which was one zone for. Upwards of 50 vehicles, uh, I would say there would be five to seven in area A, I believe there's four to five. Um, and I just, I just wanted to note, we, the original landscape plan. We did approximately, I believe, 10 feet off the sidewalk with aperitives. And or, uh, irrigation. Um, that would be something that we would work. Potentially with the C P C to try and, um. I'm sorry?
It, it's, and Sasha, if you could put yourself on mute, mute, please.
Oops, sorry.
Somebody else, thank, perfect, thank you, all right, so, um. Aperitives, they're existing, as, yeah, they do, they look good. You know. Um, how many, can you help me for how many trucks are in C and D?
Two or three of these. Madam Chair, probably two or three apiece. And, and we'd be willing to put larger plantings in the aperitif area if, if so be it, larger green, they're, they're pretty sizable at this point now, they're. I would say 12 to 14 foot, but if, if, you know, we would work with C P C to be able to make, um. You know, maybe, maybe some large trees in that area, um. And, and just a matter of comment, we did have an office that was on site at one point. That we had a building permit for, that we were instructed to remove, that office trailer, um, has been removed. But obviously, the smaller businesses would, would like to have small little offices, and we would actually help provide that. Um, to these smaller businesses, you know, which are ultimately startups, but we would help. Provide, um. You know, again, they would be trailer-like temporary. In accordance with the property's zoning, um, so they wouldn't have foundations, they would be above grade. Temporary, but they would, they would have power, um, non, they would not have bathrooms, obviously, but they would be offices.
So is the, the. Um, the office trailer that was authorized by C P C. Did, um, to replace an, an older one, is that, is that not on site?
It's not on site, Mr. Noel had asked for a cease and desist, we had a very clear building permit for that onsite. In accordance with being able to sell the property. You know, it was an infringement between the properties, and that was, and that was one of the reasons we removed it, but based on not. Wanting to affect any of these meetings, we completely moved it, you know, offsite and out of town. Um. And, and I don't think that sizable trailer went with the effect of, of what these businesses are. Um, they are smaller businesses, so in area A, if you, you know, he has a. I would say it's a 15 by 15 office space, he's got a couple desks in there, um, he's got power, he utilizes a cellphone. Uh, he pays his bills out of it and his secretary does her billing out of it, so.
Is that the little box shown on the plan?
It is, yeah, those little, little boxes. In area B, um, he's, he's got the same thing, he is just not, his, his was also temporary, but his not, is not tied into electrical service. It's just a little. I, I would call it much like a little shed type atmosphere. But, you know, they would, area C has asked me if he could put something out there, and, and just so everybody knows too, there was extensive D E P. Um, negotiations on those areas back there, they were deemed to be. Um, already pre-disturbed areas, we actually, in area C, we physically dug up an old car that was dug and put underground. Um, so we, we've restored that to their plans and they're happy in our. And, and so those areas are, um, even though they're within the 100 foot wetlands, they're approved by D E P.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. So we could. If you wanted to approve. Landscaping. Business. Um, we can't approve outdoor storage of materials, that has to, you know, if C P C wants to do that, they can do that. Which really just leaves it down to the. Vehicles. Wait a minute. Our business, general regulations. Just looking at. Um, our zoning bylaws. And Highway Business District. General Regulations. All uses shall come, this is. Section 200 dash 39 to G. All uses shall comply with the following additional restrictions. All uses are restricted to closed buildings, except for drive-up windows where specifically approved. An outdoor storage of materials and supplies is prohibited unless specifically approved. I think we, I think. That. May. Nick, may prohibit us, and I, I apologize for. Seeing that sooner because we have dealt with other landscaping businesses where they had. A facility. And here. On the, the. Hey guys, take a look at that. Um, where they've had a facility and then you allow, you know, parking that, that goes along with the business. Here, parking really is the business. And I don't know that. These comply with this at all. Do you guys, um, do you have your? Bylaws, take a look at that, make sure I'm not. Or I guess, Jerry, is that consistent with what? You've been trying to enforce and we've just been missing it?
That is correct.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, I'm sorry. Give me two, a, a second if you want to look at that, but based on that, I, I, I apologize, I don't think we can grant this. Yes, so counsel.
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you. I, I don't think there's, I, I don't know that that's a fair reading of the ordinance, I believe these businesses are clearly landscaping, they're not parking, no one's charging for parking. It's certainly ancillary to the principal business, which is landscaping, but no one, I read automobile parking to mean someone's gonna provide parking for a fee.
No, and, and, and that's not what I was implying. I'm just reading from our general regs, where the use, so landscaping use here that's being proposed, it's restricted to closed buildings, except for drive-up windows. And then, so I don't think that this meets the intent of this bylaw. Or I don't think the proposed use.
So if they put offices in Madam Chair, if you, if, if the, are you saying that if these businesses had offices that they would comply?
Well, when we've had other landscaping businesses that we've considered and, okay, just it has been, someone has been proposing a and for the most part, either office or retail facility, and then along with that, they've asked, can they have either materials or vehicles left onsite, but the primary use was a, like Viking Tree or Boston Flower Market is a facility, a building with it, where the use takes place. And then the you know, the employee parking and a trucks to support that business are, are considered, you know, where, where that might be appropriate. Here, I don't, we're not, you're not asking it's, it's not, it's not really a comparable business model.
So Madam, Madam Chair, if, if in the event that small offices were put in their particular sites, as per our proposal that we're talking about and we discussed, and, and we, you know, as we did have an office trailer onsite, but what was, was obviously asked by the building department, actually directed to immediately cease and desist and remove the office trailers that were onsite. If we were to bring them back and put them onsite, would we qualify in regards to a small business? I mean, much like, much like, you know, the, the question is, Todd from Extreme has absolutely no office on the Reading Lumber site.
I'm sorry, who does?
Extreme excavation is on the Reading Lumber site.
Alright, Jerry, have they been told to move?
They have been told to move and they are still, they are still there. I have, I have quite a bit of issues about, about me tree. And unfortunately, that is one of them, so was in this. And the trailer, the office trailer they keep referring to was on the service station in which has been sold.
Which, which was given a building permit by your predecessor.
That was given a building permit, but it's on wheels, it is, it, it was a temporary trailer. When I looked at his, when I looked at his permit, it was a temporary trailer by my predecessor.
It was fixed into permanent services.
I have, I have no idea if it was fixed into permanent, permanent services, all I know is it's temporary, I consider that temporary.
And we're not, we're not gonna argue about that one, because it's not in front of us, we're already taking a, a lot of everyone's time, and we have a number of hearings we need to get through, so I would, I would say, let's, let's move this towards a vote. And I, I think my, my position has been, I, I, I really appreciate the input and going through the process, I think we've had to, at least, we've got, gotten a lot of information about this property. And I want to see the owner be able to do something to, you know, enhance revenue from the property, I, I, I think that's, I understand that. I don't think these particular uses are consistent with our zoning bylaws, particularly the all use are restricted to closed buildings, what's this? I'm sorry, someone's jumping on my screen, and other permits that we've given in town, that's, I'm, I'm just one of, one of three, but that's what I'm, where I am on this. Can I get the input from, or conclusions, like, we gotta, we gotta move this, move this to a vote.
Madam Chair, should we give the applicant the opportunity to withdraw and potentially amend the plan based on, I think what you're saying, you're reading, the reading with regard to, I think the closed building needs to be more sort of a retail place as opposed to just plain storage or something to that effect, because I mean, I still feel like there's a chance to do something with this, it's just not this.
And, and I I think that's right, I think there, and there's definitely opportunity to do this, I just was not, not the, the best plan. That being said, this has been in front of the board for on and off for almost over a year, and I think they need, I would say we should vote on this up or down, and then they need to come back with a different plan, it's not, it's not gonna be a tweak of, of, of this.
Madam Chair, all due respect, I know that it's been before your board for quite some time, but this issue has only been introduced within the last fifteen minutes. The issue of whether or not, in fact, we qualify for relief. In that regard, I would, I would respectfully request that either you allow us, A, a short continuance to provide you with an updated plan that we could amend, subsequently amend the petition so as to come within the definition that you feel we do not comply with, or B, if your board does not see fit, allow us to withdraw without prejudice so as to be able to reapply and try to enhance these uses, or try to, try to, try to make these uses more readily fit with the types of businesses that you have, landscaping businesses that you have permitted in the past. If you give us that opportunity, I think, you know, we would much appreciate it, because this is kinda, this issue has literally just come up within the last few minutes, where your board is now saying that we may not even, the ninety, ninety, you know, ninety percent of the discussion has been in terms of the impacts. Now, I think there's a whole discussion of whether or not we even fit the definition, which with all due respect, I would request if, you know, you'd allow us a short period of time in which to try to meet that definition, either through A, a continuance, or if you, you know, I, I mean, our preference would be a continuance. But if you don't see that as being possible, then at the very least, we would, we would ask for a withdrawal without prejudice, so as to be able to reapply and more readily comply with these, with the definition and come back before your board and do a full presentation.
The, the, if we were to do that, one of the issues is you are, your, your client is, is and has been operating onsite for the past year plus without with, without a done a approval, so if you withdrew, I mean, then you have a, you have an active cease and desist.
So why don't you give us a short continuance, Madam Chair, just a couple of weeks to try to come back before you with a plan that more readily addresses the issues that you raised.
But Kathy?
We already closed the meeting, right?
Yeah, we didn't close it, so we think they could still draw at this point. Because we have not voted, but we can't, Kathy, to your point, you're right, they can't with, they can't, we can't continue it at this point. And
Madam Chair, I think a motion to reopen, provided it was voted upon, would, would enable us to request a, a continuance.
Fair enough.
I, I, it's a short, a short period of time, we're not asking for a lengthy, you know, and, and I would also point out that we've been before your board on what, at least three occasions, and you know, I know you're saying we're in violation, but there's been nobody here from the trailer park that, that, these businesses enjoy very good relationships with all the residents of the trailer park. There's nobody here from the trailer park that's saying, in any respect, that these businesses are, you know, impacting their lifestyle, negatively or adversely affect their standard of living there, you know, no one showed up.
Do the, do the residents get noticed? Do they get noticed at the hearing?
They're all aware of this, because we've spoken of several of them, or the applicant has spoken of several of the residents who are aware.
They don't get official notices since they're not
No.
elderly donors.
They are aware of it. They are aware of it. If you would like us to notice the residents, we would be more than glad to bring the residents in. We, 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 because it's the commercial application, but they've, they've actually asked to come in and speak on our behalf, you know, like, for example, Elite Concrete does a lot of snow removal and individual stuff to help some of the elderly residents. So we, we would actually appreciate that.
Alright, um, thank you, let, let me just caucus with my board for a second here. We've taken substantial time trying to work through this. I am concerned, I know that our building inspector is concerned that they are just operating as is. I do not want this to go another month. We can either allow withdrawal or vote on it at this point. And I think the, if there were a plan to come in front of us, I think we'd be looking, I would be hoping to see something very different. A different proposed use that would integrate better with the residents. If you are feeling, if you guys support a motion to withdraw, then we can do that, and then let the applicant try to come up with a, a, another proposal and come in front of us when they're ready to do that, but in the meantime, they need to be responsive to the building inspectors' cease and desist.
That makes sense, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm in agreement with you.
Alright.
I'd support that.
Okay. So we can have a vote on applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice, meaning we can see them again with a different plan. Potentially for the, for landscaping use at a point in the future. So making a motion, I don't know if we have to give them an official motion to withdraw, but let's, we can vote on their request, we'll do it, roll call, Maria.
Hi, Maria Lockhart, vote yes.
Alright, Brendan?
Hi, Brendan Riley, vote yes.
Alright, and then I will support that as well, yes, you may withdraw this up, you want to come back with a new and improved plan, we would be happy to talk to you about it, but in the meantime, the existing use is not approved. Alright guys, we've got a number of people who have been more than patient waiting for us, let's see if we can help them move on for their evening. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, I know this was a very long one that has been of issue on our board. How about 138 Central Street, let me just read this. A virtual public hearing will be held Thursday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven PM. Petition of Cheryl Hater, one thirty-eight Central Street, North Reading, Mass. Map thirty-three, parcel sixteen, for a home op, special permit for craft business per article two hundred dash forty-two, North Reading zoning bylaws. Do we have a Miss Hater here?
Yes, I'm here.
Lovely, would you tell us, and thank you again for your patience, can you tell us real briefly about the business that you want to have?
Um, yeah, I'm actually a retired nurse that took up sewing and I plan on selling my sewn items at various craft fairs.
Lovely, is it just you?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the requirements for home occupancy special permit?
Like what?
We will tell you right now.
Did you get the draft notes that I sent, Jim?
Did I get the drafts? No, I didn't. The, the, the quick quick rundown ours, no more, no person other than the residential occupant shall be employed, so if it's just you, you are
Yeah.
there, no more than three hundred square feet devoted to such use at your home, and no display of goods, wares, or signs related to the home occupation visible from the exterior, so you can have
That's all true.
your house, but not, no signage saying that you're operating a business there.
That's perfect.
Perfect, love it. Any neighbors here to support or questions? Alright. Bob, you wanna make a motion on this? Could jump back into the action?
That's fine, I didn't receive the draft, but notwithstanding, and thank you Kathy for your efforts with regard to that. First, like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Barbara and I.
Maria and Brendan, once you guys take this away, you got this.
Brendan Riley.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion with regard to the application submitted by the petitioner for use of, for special occupation, home occupation, will, home occupation special permit pursuant to article two hundred dash forty-two to grant the petitioner Cheryl Hater, one thirty-eight Central Street, North Reading, Mass. Map thirty-three parcel sixteen, for purposes of the special permit, subject to the conditions set forth within our zoning bylaws, that the permit shall be the use of the home for, to be granted unless with the finding that the building or premises occupied will not be subject to rented objectionable too detrimental to the residential nature of the character of the neighborhood due to exterior appearance, traffic emission, odor, gas, etc. Special permit shall contain the following mandatory conditions. No person other than the residential occupant shall be employed therein. No more than three hundred square feet of the premises shall be devoted to such use, and there should be no display of goods, wares, or signs related to the home occupation visible from the exterior of, again, one thirty-eight Central Street.
Great, Brendan, would you like, do we have a second on that?
I, Brendan Riley, second that motion.
Right, all in favor?
Barbara and I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Wonderful, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck with your new business, I hope that goes very well for you.
Thank you.
Right, how about, that was, that was one thirty-eight Central. Moving right along to our friends at Moving right along to our friends at. Seventeen Williams Road, virtual public hearing will be held by teleconference on Thursday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven P M. Petition of Daryl. Siciliano.
Very good.
Seventeen Williams Road, North Reading, N A, map sixty-two parcel one for a special permit, raise chickens. All right, we have. Um, Kathy, if you want to put up just a, the plot plan showing the. Location of the coop. Here, we've got. Coop setback. Meaning our setback requirements, thank you. How many chickens are you proposing, Mr. Siciliano?
Uh, four to six.
I love it. Do we have any neighbors here who have any? Concerns with the chickens? Looks like you got yourself some chickens.
All right, I, I have many, many, uh, butters in support, uh, they're not in attendance, but, uh, they'd be willing to. Um, speak to somebody on my behalf if that was necessary.
In exchange for a dozen eggs or so?
Free eggs, yes.
Great, now that's, um. That all looks good, you're also subject to, um. Board of Health.
Yes.
They, you need to meet with them and make sure you're. Uh, that the coop is satisfactory and that the. Um, chicken. Waste, manure, et cetera, is handled properly, but that's, that's all Board of Health, we're just. On location and use.
Madam Chair, so, um. And with the note of nod, a note of thanks to, uh. Uh, Mr. Noel. Um, may note to the, to the board that with regard to these petitions which we have seen a increase in. In addition to the setback and also the obvious placement of the coop within the property. It should be noted that, uh. You may note that, uh, how will the infrastructure, the enclosure be? Made, in other words, I know that having driven by the property that the front yard. Has, um. Fenced. In from the, the street level, I just want to, is, is the, does that fencing stand around the. Perimeter of the, um, property, or is it just on the front?
Uh, it extends, uh, across the front of the face of the house, uh, out to both. Both sides, all the way down, both sides, and it's also enclosed in the back, yes.
Uh, that's optimal, thank you, and, um, this should also be a note that, uh. You know, there's also a consideration I think you might run into with how best to how the, how the structure is going to be made, constructed itself, but. It's always. Uh, helpful for the board to understand that, um. Uh, these areas are now fenced in, so you don't run the risk of, um. Of encroachment upon your neighbors. Actually by the, um. The chickens that you're. Raising, so, uh, thank you for clarifying that, that.
Understood.
The rare, the, the entire premises being fenced.
Okay, thank you.
And in deference to our building inspector, would you can tell us how, what the, uh, what the coop is. Constructed of.
Uh, constructed mostly of, uh, pine and, uh. Wire fencing, chicken wire. That works.
That worked for you, Jerry, all right. Fantastic.
Thank you.
I would like to. Let's see, would anyone like to make a motion? Brendan, you feeling like, feeling up for a motion?
I make a, a motion to, uh, close the, um. Hearing for the chicken coop.
Uh, Barbara and second.
Maria Lockhart, third. I.
Right, and then, um, I want to make a motion to, uh. Approve a. Special permit for between four to six chickens and per the plan provided.
Second by Barbara. Oh, you're looking for a motion.
I was looking for, I, I was, I was, I was giving a lead there, if someone would like to make that motion.
Thank you.
I'm Maria Lockhart, moved to grant a special permit for up to four to six chickens, um. With regard to the petition of Daryl Siciliano, seventeen Williams Road, North Reading, Massachusetts, map sixty-two parcel one. Uh, for a special permit to raise chickens on the conditions that the coop will be constructed, I think of chicken wire fencing and no roosters.
Oh, that's right. That's. That, good catch on the no roosters.
Yeah, no, there's, there are no roosters allowed in town.
That exactly, I don't know where they all go, but. Perfect. Um, that's your motion, so do we have a second on that?
Uh, Barbara and second.
And then I'll still roll call, all in favor, Maria?
Maria Lockhart, I.
All right, I, you have. Unanimous support there, so best of luck to you with your chickens.
Excellent, thank you all for your time.
Absolutely, do, do make sure to go by Board of Health and with all special permits, there's a twenty day appeal period. Um, and then once that twenty days appeal period has run, you can pick up your special permit.
Fabulous, thank you again.
You're most welcome, all right.
Excuse me, Sasha's, um. Phone died, so he was going to. Sign back in, so if you want to move. I don't see him on right now. Or, or, uh, eight pilgrims.
Absolutely, that's, I'm just going.
I'm gonna try to text.
So, Sasha, we lost him for a minute. Um, okay, he wants his home op for. And, that's again.
I believe that members of his association were going to be on tonight to, um, listen before they gave their approval. Or. Stay there.
Okay, so. We not have him back. All right, we can bump ahead to. Was it nineteen Parker, no, let's see.
Well, nineteen Parker Drive was a continued matter, whereas, um. The new business would be the, um, variance, uh, the request for extension, um, that was granted. I believe. Twenty twenty-two for, uh, fifty Haberell Street. Those are the only two remaining matters, so I, my assumption would be, uh, my belief is that we. Dress nineteen Parker Drive.
Let's go ahead and do that. Um, for nineteen Parker. Uh, continued virtual public hearing. We held Thursday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Three, seven P M, petition of Ralph Karodi. Uh, Karodi Junior for variance from the left side setback to construct a twelve by twelve shed. At nineteen Parker Drive, North Reading, Mass, map fifty-seven parcel three, according to the requirements outlined in the dimensional. And density regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws. And the issue on this, when we last met, was, um. Twofold, one was a proposed shed. Uh, three feet from the lot line, and that's the, the yellow highlighted. Air, uh, building, and also that it was on top of a septic. And we had asked the applicant to go speak with. Um, Board of Health because they had sent us, um. Messaging that nothing could be put in that location, and we actually received, let's see, was it? From the. Health Building Department. Correspondence this afternoon, I'll just read it into the record. For the Health Building Department meeting with the property owner of nineteen Parker Drive, North Reading, the Health Department informed the owner that no shed could be stationed. Temporarily or permanent above the onsite sewage disposal system in accordance with three ten C M R fifteen point oh oh oh. Mass Environmental Title Five Code, the property owner was advised to ascertain. A local engineer to seek out options for a shed on his property. Property. Then, um, presumably owner was also advised to provide a mass title five report because the Health Department Title Five contained an approved system different from. The current onsite sewage disposal system the current owner has in place. It appears that an illegal system was installed prior to the homeowner purchasing the property, fun times. All right, so can we, uh, there you are, hello, Mr. Karodi. All right. Welcome.
Nice.
So, um. Give us, help us out a little bit, we have this, the, the letter that I just read in from the. Health Department saying. That that's not an, uh, allowed location, do you have? Someplace else you would like to put your shed?
No, I think we talked about this last time, we exhausted all options, looking around, um. Everywhere, I have a dry well in the back. It's right at the end of the driveway, the other side, I don't have the setbacks, um. So this is kind of where it had to go and. I, I talked to people after, I talked to a few engineers and, um. So. I was informed that I'm not violating any. Um, laws. Uh, per se by, uh, the Board of Health, I'm not damaging my system in any way, and I was also informed that, so I guess. Yeah, I, I found out that my septic was illegal when I went down to talk to the Board of Health. Prior to me buying it, but they moved it to the backyard, um. But what I also found out is if they updated the pipes underground, then you can pave over it, and then I could put a shed on it anyway. So technically, it could be. Done up to code right now, and there's no issues, and we're not even talking about it, and he also said, um, that if I have a different. Interpretation of, uh, the laws, then I would just have to go get a state inspection. And honestly, it's just sitting on blocks, it's, I'm not, I'm not harming it, I'm not doing anything, it's a little twelve by twelve shed at the end of the driveway. All the neighbors are fine with the zoning, so what I was also informed was check off your boxes, so if this is a zoning issue with the shed. With the fence, we check off this box, if I need to talk to the Board of Health, I'll go talk to the Board of Health, but I need to get. If the, the stop work order that I have is for a violation that's too close to the fence, and I have letters saying none of the neighbors care, it's no big deal. So I just need to check off this box, and then I can move on to the Board of Health, is what, what I gotta do. So.
Um. And. Yeah. Typical, uh, the. Required setback for a. For a shed, that's for a detached, not attached to, uh. To the property is. Ten feet, um, we have given, we have given relief from that where. Sort of where it makes sense. We haven't given anything that close to a lot line. Um, could you? I think we've gone as close as maybe five.
Wind up on top of my, it's not on top of my septic, it's on top of my leaching field is what it is, it's actually not even on top, it's hovering around because I strategically. Set it on blocks all around, and the cover is to the side, so if I move it over anymore, I'll be on my cover, and I can't do that. So that's why I, I needed to put it right where it is, and it's, like I said, it's the end of the driveway, I have, I know the spot, I run a business. Uh, I run a construction company. I need, you know, storage, I need, I just. This is where I'm at, so, and like I said, I'm, it's literally sitting on blocks all around it, uh, I'm. There's nothing, there's no weight on it, there's, there's nothing. That I'm doing negatively to affect my system, so.
Yeah, and, and to your point.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, Ralph, the only thing I cannot trump. Title five is the only thing. In the state of Massachusetts, I can trump anything, there's nobody that can trump the building code except the title five. Uh, Director Bracy has asked you to get a, to get a Title Five report. Um, because of that. This, this, this basically is a moot point, uh, I, I, you, you need to get the Title Five report. I'm not trying to. To harm you or to throw a wrench into this whatsoever, but. Once again, the key to this is. I cannot trump Title Five.
O- okay, so some of those.
If that makes any sense, Ralph.
So it, they, it does, but, uh, so what I did was I called some of those engineers, uh, that list that you gave me, and that's what I was informed of. I was informed to check off my boxes as we go. And. So I guess I can't check off this box without doing Title Five first, is what I'm hearing.
They need to give you an actual report, and that's what Director Bracy told me to make sure that. I convey to you in this meeting, that they need to give you a report, just hearsay does not work. It needs to be, uh, an, an actual report from a Title Five certified inspector. Um, that's what Director Bracy instructed me to convey to you. So I'm just making sure that I am conveying that, that's all.
Okay, so how do I, how do I go about that, I call a state inspector to come out and. To come out and look, or how does that? How's that work?
Your best bet would be to call Director Bracy, um, and or his assistant, and they should be able to help you. Um, I think, um, Kathy Morgan may be able to, uh. Uh, help you on that as well, because she's very, uh, um, instrumental in that. With people that come to the county, Kathy, can you, can you aid him on that?
He wants numbers for engineers, is that what it is?
Yeah, so you could probably, uh, give, give that to him tomorrow.
No, yeah, I already got numbers for engineers, I need, and it was to try to find out who. Who did my septic, and obviously nobody's going to tell me who did my illegal septic twelve years ago, so I, you know, it's. I don't know how I'm expected to just dig this stuff up. You know what I mean, uh, um, I'm willing to do what I gotta do, like, if this is somebody I can. Have come out and be like, oh, yep, if I gotta dig a hole and see that the pipes are up to code now, I, you know. Whatever I gotta do, but me just calling some random engineers didn't really help me out.
Well, Ralph, uh, come on in, come on, come in tomorrow morning, and I can. I'll find a list for you of the, of the, um, certified engineers that. Um, you are, you, you would be required to call in order to make sure that this is, uh. Uh, compliant.
All right, I could do that, sir, I appreciate that. What time you gonna be there?
I get in at eight, at seven o'clock, but, um, just come in anytime, eight N A. But, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm in a meeting at eight thirty, so come in at eight.
Okay, I'll be there. All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, sorry, sorry about that, Jen, uh, uh, miss, I'm sorry, miss. Miss Chair, but Madam Chair, so if you want to, uh, continue, I apologize, I didn't mean to take up that much time.
Not at all, I'm glad that you were here and you could have that conversation, because, I mean, end of the day, we're just trying to get. You the approvals that you need and, and get to this issue, I will say, the, the. The three is gonna, is, is, is tight, even, um, if they, if the septic is not there, I, the three is still tight.
I have levers from the neighbor right next door on his side, the house is way on the other side, and I was, and I'm willing.
That would be very helpful if.
I already got them, I already have them, I have letters from all my neighbors. And he's actually, yeah, yeah, I got letters from all them three.
Thank you, Ralph, that, that's awesome. Thank you, Ralph. That's awesome. I think what those are probably in the file. We'll go back and look at those. The other thing I want to see is just the layout. And it may be in the file. We just need to go back between your house and the next one.
Yeah, he was.
But we want to make sure there's enough passageway to get. Back around the house. I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So if we can see both of those together, that'll, that'll help us. Um, and it may be in the file.
Yeah, it's in the file. I said, that was all in the, on the last meeting.
Fantastic. Why don't we bump you out? Um, we can just put this on the calendar for August. And if that's not enough time. Then let Kathy know. Um, we make the second Thursday of the month. How's that for?
I think that's.
I think August tenth.
Yeah, that should work.
Jerry, if they're gonna need a, if he's gonna need a title five report, is that enough time to generate one?
Yeah, probably. I mean, I mean, could be. Let's, let's give you to the, put you on the agenda. That way you're there. And if you have to come see us, if not, tell Kathy and we'll bump you a month.
Okay, thank you.
That gives you the, the best chance to get back in front of us. And I think that was, that was the tenth guys. Is that right?
That would be the second Thursday of the month, which is our standard. Meeting scheduling. Calendar.
Okay. Ten. And just. Would you? So we're doing it properly. Would you request a continuance till next?
I request the continuance till August tenth.
Beautiful. Um, and then we're just gonna do a quick roll call vote. Uh, let's see, Bob, you're on. I see you.
So for pur- for purposes of the, um, I, I bought brain eye for purposes of the continuance, grant of continuance.
Beautiful. Maria.
Lockhart, second that.
Lovely Brendan. There you are.
Brendan Riley, I.
Perfect. Thank you. Um. Good luck with the title five.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll, I'll get it done. I'll see you guys next month.
And we'll get the, the whole file together so we can make sure we can see the layout between you and the neighbor.
Yeah, if there's anything you request in between, I mean, you just email me whatever. I have the letters. I have everything I think I need. So. Whatever I gotta do, I'm willing to do. All right.
I got it. Thanks so much. And thanks for the patience this evening. We'll see you.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Do we? Kathy, are you keeping track? What do we have left? Are we almost everywhere?
I think we just have, um, well, we have that extension, but I don't see her here.
See, is that, um?
Other than eight pilgrim, and I don't see him getting back on. I don't know whether you want to continue him.
Gave up on us. Well, I know it's a late one. We're getting. So we.
I tried sending him an email, but um.
Yeah, let's, if, if he's not here, let's bump that. And then the, um. The request for the extension of the variance for fifty Havel Street. I saw a letter on that. Is that, was that officially? Published? Well, no, it's like, you don't need to publish that. It's not a hearing. It's just.
Can I just? I think there might be some rebutters for eight pilgrim. If it's continued to August tenth, the sign on, it will be the same as. Tonight's meeting. If you want to show up at seven o'clock on the tenth.
And we'll put it at the, the, we'll put it at the front of the line. So. So you don't have to.
Everything was very interesting, but you know.
I know this is, it's kind of hard to beat this for a fun Thursday.
Yeah.
But we'll put it at the, at the top of the list. And Kathy, if I don't remember in a month, just please remind me. Um, and we can, and if you would tell the applicant that Kathy, just pop them an email. So we're gonna pop it to the, the front of the line on the tenth. And then. We can address it then. And thank you so much for coming and supporting or supporting the process. And being here. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thanks. See you next month.
See you guys next month.
So as far as fifty Havel Street, they were granted a variance for a garage addition. She, I don't know whether you read her letter. She was out of the country for a little while and. She wanted to request an extension. I don't know whether you.
Um, I did see that and she wrote a very, a lovely letter to us. We can give up and make sure everyone has seen that. What's the address again? Was that? I'm sorry, what?
Fifty Havel Street. It was on.
Was it in the packet or was it a separate letter? I just, I remember.
The letter was within the packet. It was on the agenda underneath business.
Page one oh five.
Thank you. You are my hero there. Let's just go to page one oh five. Okay, so this was from Juliana Paula Madeiros. And we had granted, previously granted a variance for the garage. Uh, she is undertaking a intensive school program abroad at the University of Denmark, which sounds. Pretty interesting and. Uh, needs to be there. It's asking for our consent. She asked for a year. We, my statute can give six months.
It was gonna be here tonight. I tried contacting her, but she might have forgotten.
I would be, I'm happy to support a six month. Extension. I know, I mean, even, even without being out of country for. Work or school purposes, just construction timelines have been. Sticky this past few years. Unless anyone has an issue with that, I would. Be inclined to, to give, give the applicant the benefit of that additional time. Um, but we would. I would want to make sure it's conveyed to her that we can only give her six months and then she has to have. A substantial work started in order to preserve that variance. Otherwise she needs to do the process over.
Okay.
So, so my read of the bylaws is that. Just to break it down. Since there hasn't been any actual commit, by my read of it, there's been no actual commencement of construction. That the grant of a special permit extension would have to be for good cause into that point. I think Madam Chair's. Acknowledgement of the letter submitted by. Mrs. Ms. Madeiros. Given her in travel abroad for purposes of her career track. Um, I would agree merits consideration and agreement of that being. Good cause pursuant to. Twenty eight, two hundred dash twenty eight I of our bylaws.
Jerry, did you have a comment? You were gonna make them that two hundred twenty.
Well, there's two point, there's two points in the bylaws that. We, we, with regard to special permit. Time limits, the first being two hundred dash twenty A, B, and C. Uh, and that usually is directed towards the building inspector, but then further along in the bylaws under. Two hundred dash twenty eight I, which kind of speaks to. Conditions for approval of a special permit. The time limit. Again, acknowledges one year. Um, except for good cause. It would expire within that one year. So now it's just a question of you battling good cause versus. The powers enumerated for the building, the, the building inspector. To reach out. So I think it. Uh, two hundred dash twenty anticipates something where construction starts, but then there's a problem and that could be. You know, sup- that supposition or hypothetical, but then you get to maybe the more. The less tangible, which is again. Situations except for good cause. And good cause, I think speaks to at least my read, what's going on with. Fifty Havel, not specifically as much with. The applicant. Madeiros.
Thank you, Bob. Jerry, did you, do you have any other? Comments on this property?
I did, but Bob pretty much covered it.
You guys are good covering all the bases. Thank you both.
So I, but again, the unusual at, the only thing that kind of is, and just to be everything I'll front on this. I still don't get a track from Madeiros as to when she expects to begin the construction and that she's asking for an extension. She's asking for a one year. Uh, Madam Chair noted that. It's six months is basically our, our limit. And I would argue, I would suggest that that is the limit. Um, that.
By mass general law, I don't have a site in front of me. I can't find it.
What was that? Concubus.
Uh, no, the, the six month special permit extension.
Yeah, forty eight speaks of that.
Okay.
I forget what, uh, might be nine. Let me see.
So whatever grant is made tonight, I think it has to be made clear to the petitioner or applicant that. It's not going to be the one year that she requested within her letter dated June twenty seven.
What was the variance? I'm just curious. Next, you can extend for a period not to exceed six months. Provided that it was. All right. Provided that it was requested before the. Original one year period expired.
Right, so. There's a lot of play here. So.
So, I mean.
This is where. And she's not before us either. So.
In his discretion upon written application. May extend the time for exercise for period not to exceed six months, provided further that the application for such extension is filed with such permit granting authority. Prior to the expert expiration of a one year period. If the current grant authority does not grant the extension within thirty days of the application. And upon the, 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 the. Here's, here's the.
Those prior to the one year, that, that's, that's thirty days prior. So. Where are we calling the numbers here? On the days.
Yeah, the, um. The application is filed with prior to the expiration of the one year period. So the. Variance was granted May twelfth. But there is a. You get the, the benefit of the twenty day. Tolling. That would still get you to approximately June.
First.
June first. And.
So she has a year to request six months. Is that sort of with how that reads? Maybe we should just tell her to apply again. I don't know.
Comes back. Uh, I think, I think she, she missed the window. I think we totally, I would, I'd support a request for six months. But the, the building or the variance expired.
The permit expired.
June one, two thousand twenty two. So.
Expired. Okay. So yeah, so she has six months then. And then she'll have to come back and try again.
No, she missed her win. She missed her window, Madam Chair, right? Her window to request the extension, she missed it by some. If you want, if you're gonna have today, it's about thirty, maybe thirty seven days. I don't know, forty. Someone. Days.
Yeah, she's, she, that, that's why I mentioned. You have the one year and then you're saying the thirty days. That's why I mentioned that is because she's, she's obviously missed it.
It was the year before. Okay. Yeah. There's really nothing we can do, right?
Unfortunately. You know, I. Say we've, we've approved it. Yeah, you can tell her Kathy, we've approved it in the past when she's back and, and if she just. Wants to consider moving forward with this project, come back to us. Um, hopefully it just, it goes through quickly because it's been vetted already. Uh, it just. Kind of, we missed the statutory window to grant an extension.
Okay, I'll let her know.
Sorry. And wish her, well, with her studies in Denmark, because that sounds really cool.
It's worth it. Just kidding.
It's seriously, I mean, you don't want to do it. I mean, if she's gonna be gone, she doesn't want to do a construction project here. You're. Go do your, go do the Denmark program, program. All right, guys. That was. Great.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the, the meeting minutes for this, in this package, Kathy, you get my one note on that, but otherwise. I was, they looked fine to me. Anyone else have any comments on those? The prior month ones, um, I, I owe you some comments on this. Which I'm not gonna do now. If that, if those are okay, I would just, um, move that we approve the. Do this one so well. Having read and considered the meet, the draft minutes prepared by the secretary from the prior month. I would, and seeing that they accurately. Portray or reflect what was said, I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the prior meeting. Do I have a second?
I, Brendan Riley second that.
All in favor? Brendan.
Brendan Riley, I.
Maria.
Lockhart, I.
Bob.
I.
Lovely. I'm not, I didn't do it nearly as well as you do, Bob. I'm gonna let you always do those in the future.
No, that's quite all right. I.
It's beautiful.
I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting, so it's kind of hard for me to comment on the.
It was, it's a work of art when you do it. Um, everyone, thank you. Have a lovely summer. I would love to hear more about it, but I know everyone is. This has been a lot.
And thanks, again, thanks for the memo, Jerry. It helps with the, uh, the special permitting, cooping. It kind of focuses the discussion. Much appreciated.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, no, that's, that's true. And hopefully our packet for next month will not be a hundred and fourteen pages.
I think we already have, um. Four. Four hearings, um, the one continued. One can be, yeah. Or two continued, two continued because.
I, I think we have to discuss on, as Jen had mentioned to us before, um. How many that we actually see and the extent of, uh. Or what I should say, the content of what that hearing made, made were. Uh, five, six, what are they?
I'm kind of cutting it off at six, um. And depending on, like you said, if it's.
I support that. That's because. We, we can only be productive for so long. Um, and the other thing that I would move as a board for us to do is. When we. when we get an application particularly for anything that's more complicated, that's um you know, essentially the, that we need to have a detailed site plan or um architectural plan for us to to be able to consider an application, and I don't want, I mean, we've had some recently where we've had to continue a number of times because they did not have a full package. And I just want to be more, I wanna be thoughtful and considerate of your time and our time um that we don't kind of waste time opening up a hearing where we just don't have enough to actually review, or if it's not um our requirements in the zoning bylaws for what's required for a, an application are pretty extensive. And um we work with a lot, a lot of, you know, particularly if it's just a homeowner where the chicken shed or chicken coop. You you don't need to over, overdraw it, overprogram it, but for for a a bigger project on Main Street. You know, they they should be coming to us with fairly detailed plans so that we can have a informed discussion.
So again, it's also the the question of the progression, because a lot of times I think they seem to have this idea they have to run it by us first and then go to planning, and then deal with it after that. And they don't want, they know they can't go to planning without hard paper. And you know, true drawings and have any success. So we end up with a lot of the hand.
We can have an informal meeting, I mean, well, as part of our Thursday night. You can have an informal discussion if someone wants to bring a proposal and say, what's, what's your thoughts on this? And we can say, hey, that looks great, or for us to consider it, we would need, you know, no, we don't like this idea for you can have, informal discussions are allowed. But once you start a hearing, we need to have enough to be able to make a decision.
But your consideration as the board would just be the use, um and then it would go to CPC. Because it's senseless to go to CPC if the use is not.
Oh, Sasha, yes, yeah.
But if that use is gonna require, you know, breaking ground, construction, you know, set, you know, all the things that you know, you deal with, Jerry. I think they're just the, I get this sense, not from the residential's, but the more uh commercial interest that they're you know, believe that that's where their money is going to be spent. The residential's have a different approach. They're trying to put a garage or, you know, an extent, it's it's a different. And I think that that's what we ran into on a number of occasions, not just this evening.
I I I understand where you're going with that, but the the town planner and also the CPC board was was very adamant uh with me um uh basically covering the fact that the zoning board needs to, needs to um address the use before it goes to them. Um maybe the ZVA should probably, or or Jen, uh um maybe you should sit down and speak with CPC and see exactly what their what their requirements are before everything goes to was.
Could I interrupt for just a minute?
Sure.
Sasha has uh entered the meeting and um instead of having him hang around, I'm just gonna tell you that they continue your hearing, Sasha, to um August tenth at seven. Can you hear me? Looks like he's jumping up into the phone. Sasha, can you hear me?
He's talking.
Might be on.
Are you muted?
Mute.
Mute.
I'll, I'll call you tomorrow and let you know, okay?
All right, guys. Um.
All right.
Closing the public hearing. Well, we already closed, right? We just, we're saying goodbye. God, have a great next month.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kathy.